You have a quorum.
I'm sorry?
You do have a quorum.
You do have a quorum.
But you can still appoint an alternate to vote.
Okay, I appoint. You. Brent. Adjustments of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Can I give you a quick summary? I know I talked to you earlier, but...
How we proceeding?
Pardon me?
How are we proceeding?
Yes, so there I had emailed everyone and asking about maybe doing site visits on Saturday morning. And I misunderstood what was going on with an application. The applicant is actually here and I thought that they were trying to present an application for approval. And they were actually coming for a sketch discussion. So they are here this evening. I put the materials that they submitted in front of you this evening. It should be after the minutes, the agenda and the minutes, and then this packet here, the materials. And they're going to give a presentation and they're looking for like other concept plans that we've discussed feedback. So that they can move forward with a more formal design. They'll be taking down a structure and rebuilding it, a residence further back from the shore, but within the 100-foot setback. So that applicant is here for 87 Blackberry Lane. The other application for the site visit, I, there's, we can look at those application materials later, but I did submit some information and this gentleman would like to have a site visit on Saturday morning. So if we could talk about that later, but in the short term, these folks are here to talk about 87 Blackberry and get some direction. And I'm sorry, schedule, are we still doing a site visit on Saturday morning?
I'm sorry, the first one was Blackberry and then the second was Haywood.
Blackberry and then Memorial Drive.
Those two, okay, and that, the order you have them in. Okay, you all set with that?
I'll set with that.
Okay, acceptance of the minutes?
Is the Memorial Drive one in here too?
It's after.
It's after, yep, because that one's just to schedule a site visit.
The bottom or the next staple deck.
It looks like that, Dawn. It's got a yellowish.
Put a number.
Oh yeah, here it is, right here. Yep, yep.
Okay, minutes. From 10:22. Any errors or omissions, Brent?
The meeting adjourned at 7:14. I think it was either 8:14 or 9:14.
I think it was eight. It was early, but...
Okay.
8:14, let's say 8:14.
Thank you.
That was the only thing I picked up on.
Any else, Brent?
No, sir.
Anybody else? I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of October 22, 2025 with the note that the meeting adjourned time should be changed to 8:14 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Greg seconded. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right, so the next, the first one is the Blackberry.
Right.
Who's here for the Blackberry? You want to talk to us about what you want to do and we'll give you some feedback. Excuse me just a minute, microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just remind everybody we need to speak into the mic for Zoom purposes.
My name is Dave Mills. I live in Monmouth. I'm assisting Mr. Weisack in his project to rehab or reconstruct the present structure, which is at 87 Blackberry Lane in Winthrop. Just as a, as a side note, I'm also a licensed third-party inspector.
Hold the mic up, please, so I can hear you.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, just as a side note, I'm a licensed third-party inspector for the state for residential construction. And I also serve on the Monmouth Planning Board. The property in question is 87 Blackberry Lane in Winthrop. The owner is Blackberry Meadows 3 LLC. Mr. Walter Weisack is a, is a primary holder in that. The land area is 0.56 acres. The lot is approximately 122 feet wide at the back section where the road is and the same for the shoreline. It's a little skewed on each side, but it's approximately 188 feet on one side and 202 on the other. The structure was built in 18, yeah, 1967. It's about 58 years old. The current structure is 40 by 29 with the 29 side facing the lake. The front of the structure is 32 feet from the shore and a basic footprint, not counting the overhangs or the decks and that is about 1,750 square feet. The unit is structurally unsound and exhibits some structural code violations if you were comparing it to, you know, current standards. The piers are not in good shape. The side porch has since fallen off and is, is no longer present. There's some holes in the roof and a few other minor problems. What we're proposing to do is to remove the existing structure. Move it back to where the rear of the present structure is. The present structure, the 29-foot, is facing the lake. What we want to do is take it, move it back and rotate it 90 degrees. So the back of the structure and that would be approximately 93 feet from the, from the shoreline. Behind the structure, approximately 20 feet or so, is where the septic system is. So we would like not to have to deal with excavation around the septic system and that we'd like to utilize that present facility in using the new or completing a new structure. On, on 10-8, I met with Mark, the CEO, to discuss the project and was told that we'd have to go before the planning board because we wanted to, in essence, remove what was there. I believe the gentlemen or gentlemen and ladies have pictures of what the structure looks like. It's kind of a funky thing, if you will. It's got like four by fours and then there's, okay. It's got four by fours and kind of half logged in between. There's some holes in the, in the walls, that type of thing. To access the lower level, there's a trap door with some like ladder stairs, if you will, to, to access that. So the, the structure is not really habitable and shows a lot of deterioration. On 10-30, and when I was here on 10-8 and that, I met briefly with Dawn to describe what we were going to do. From 10:13 to 10:18, I did a site visit, took some pictures, discussed with the owner what was, what he wanted to do. On 10:20, I came in and met with the town planner and showed her documents and a procedure that we wanted to follow and a proposal. And also she reviewed with me the checklist. So I took the checklist and that information, went back, completed some of the other information that would be required and came back on the 24th and presented it to her. The only thing in the proposal that I had written up about what we wanted to do with the project was a question about the height. I had put down, going to have a maximum of 35 feet and I was corrected to say that it's a maximum of 25 feet here in Winthrop. So we were under the impression at that point that we were going to be on the agenda for this, for this meeting. But on the 10th of November, I received an email saying that she had discussed the project with the planning board chairman and deemed that it was incomplete. One of the things that was presented was that they wanted an elevation and pictorial of the structure that would replace it. But that's a substantial expense to undertake, not knowing that we'd be allowed to do that. And if you approve the, the procedure and that, once we develop that, we'll be presenting to the code enforcement officer for his review and compliance. And that's about it.
Okay. I presume at this juncture, you're looking for feedback from the board. We also have a walkthrough planned on Saturday, right? At 11 o'clock? Dawn? Pardon?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we're not, we, we can do a site visit and that, we're not sure about the stability of the whole structure itself.
I don't think we'll go into it.
And we don't, we don't know what might be living in there from the hole in the roof, so...
Okay, so must start over here, Brent? Questions, feedback, expectations?
So I'm, I'm looking at the, this package for information.
Okay.
Just before the color photos, there's a a site plan.
Yeah, unfortunately, that site plan is a lot next to it.
That, that's what I'm trying to figure out is where, where, are we lot three?
Okay. Actually, the lot line over here, the, the lot is to that side. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Here we, here we go. No, the, the lot is to there. This is the shoreline.
So this is the lot we're talking about then?
That is correct.
Not this?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the septic system is existing?
Yes.
And do you know when that was installed?
I do not.
Recent history? Like within five years or?
Oh.
Long time back? Okay.
Yep. So the, the field is there and, you know, whatever we do with the structure, we'd have to ascertain that the field could still support it. But out of the starting gate, we'd like not to say, okay, we're going to dig it up.
Understood. I, I'm sure you're aware, planning board role, our, our role here is to, is when we look at it and we're relocating it, we have to relocate it to the maximum extent practicable.
That is correct.
Away from the lake, so...
And that's, that's why we were going to take the structure, move it back and rotate it. So from the back of the structure to the edge of the, the field would be about 20 feet.
Okay. Uh, that's all I've got for right now, Mr. Chairman. I'm just digging into this.
Nothing right now. Uh, just a question to make sure of, like Brent said, I mean, when we evaluate it, we're looking for the, to, if we can get to the 100-foot mark, we're going to try to do that every, anytime that's possible. So that's something, when we do the site review, that's something we'll bring into account.
Right.
Is to say, is it feasible to move it back? And if it's not, why? So that would be a question that we would ask. The second question we would ask, you can answer that one if you want, then I go on to my second one.
Yeah, so we, we propose to move it back so that there'd be 93 feet between the building and, and the shoreline. To move it back any farther, I'd have to go through the septic system. We'd have to probably decommission that.
Okay.
Put a new one in, that type of thing. And it, it'd be an additional large amount of excavation and soil erosion and that.
Right.
Because like, like in other projects like this, to, when we undertook it, we had to put a silt fence up and, by the, by the lakeside. Have erosion control mulch in front of that. And then after we're done with everything, work with some landscaper to do some plantings and that to restore the, the area. Right now, it's, you, you can see from the pictures, it's basically almost a field except for right down by where the, the shore is.
The second thing that we check for is the impervious cover. So we're capped at 20% or what's existing. So we want to make sure if you're using some of the expansion and any of the other structures and making sure that that's included in the calculation. So we'll look at that at the site visit.
Yes, so the, the lot size is 0.56 acres.
Yep.
And, you know, the, the building now, depending on if you add in some of the, the deck and the missing deck and that, is around 2,000, give or take.
Right, I think, I mean, I, I just, I speak that just because that's always a question that we get. So, I mean, you're looking at 24,000, so you're going to be 20%, it's going to be like 40, just under 5,000 square feet of impervious cover max.
Yeah.
So I'm just mentioning that because that does include the roof, that does include decks, that does include driveways, anything that's classified as impervious. So I just note that as something that, that's something we will ask when we're on site.
And the, the driveway that kind of accesses it through where the next lot is.
Yeah.
It's crushed stone and that, none of it is paved, so it
Yes.
It provides drainage.
Yep.
And usually when, I've been involved in projects like this, when you do the perimeter around the foundation and that, we put crushed rock in and that and, and put it off to a dry well or something to preclude it from entering the lake or, you know...
Right, that is, that is something we usually do. We, we like to see when we, because, you know, we've had some that they want to daylight it near the water and we're like, no, no, no. That, that'll be in the construction plan, I'm assuming, when we see that.
It would. Sorry, I didn't mean to have my back to you.
No, we just... No, good. I just, I'm just mentioning, these are common questions that when we, when we evaluate a site, those are the things, those are some of the things we'll look at.
Yeah.
Do you, I'm sorry.
I, I'm good.
Do you need an, do you need an elevation certificate?
It looks like you're well outside of the flood elevation. So if you're moving it back, I think you'll probably be fine. Because it looks like...
It's, it's, it's a very steep slope.
That's what it looked like from the picture. I was guessing if you slide it back at all, I think you'll be fine.
It is.
So...
It doesn't really level out to, you probably get maybe 200 feet from the shore.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's an extreme slope right there now. Because right now, there's a lower level, it's a walkout.
Yep.
So we're just going to move it kind of back and up the hill, if you will.
Or did you say the new one was going to be?
I'm sorry?
What's the distance, Molly?
You said nine.
It's 93 to the back over here.
Oh, to the back?
Right.
Oh.
And then we're 21 feet from the edge of the septic.
Setback from the shore is going to be 60.
That is, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Please another.
Okay.
Nine more. You got it now, 11 more.
I mean, it, it would, if I had to go back farther and that, we'd have to do some excavation over here to make sure that we're not encroaching on the leach field.
I'm just saying, if you want to fix it.
Oh, okay.
Changes.
Okay.
Now, is the new structure going to be the same footage?
We're, we're going to look to possibly increase it some because some of the rooms inside and that are not really habitable for...
Yeah.
For the current codes.
Oh, it's not exactly the same footprint. You'll want to take advantage of the expansion.
Yes, if, if anything, we'd probably go wider.
Yeah, okay. We'd want to look at that and make sure.
I mean, the code, code says that you have to have a certain square footage for bedrooms and things of that nature and that. And the current structure would not comply with that at all, even if we just took it back and replicated it.
Yeah, so you just have to make sure you don't go over the 30%, is it?
Yep. Our, our desire would be that if it's approved and that, we'd get the plans drawn up and that, and then we'd submit them to the code enforcement officer for him to review.
Is this going to go on a foundation?
Probably, yes.
So it'll have a lower level? Like a basement out or daylight basement? Okay. Yeah, yeah, so you're going to be, the 20 feet's going to limit you on that. 20 if you're within 75 feet.
Okay.
Doesn't matter where you own it, it's where the camp sits. It's where the camp sits. If you can, you could have the front of the camp at a different height than the back of the camp. So it's weird, you could have 11 feet of your camp at 20 feet and then you could go up to 25 feet at 75 feet.
Okay.
It's right.
No, not the front.
The front.
The lowest spot to the highest spot is your measurement.
Right.
So let's say you're a walkout basement. You, you measure from that point in the ground and then we're up to wherever the peak is, the highest spot, that's your total height. So you're limited to 20 foot within 75, 25 within 100?
Yep.
Okay. You want anything else?
No.
Jamie?
Yes.
But it would be great.
Yeah, a lot of the measurements we did was, you know, we went down and where the shore was, where it comes around like that, we took the closest point to the structure to do the measurements. And there's stakes out there, there's stakes out there now that represent...
Oh, it is.
Yeah, you said Jamie?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You all set, Jamie? Dawn?
I'm all set. I just want to note that you mentioned site visit earlier and 11 o'clock was the time that we had talked about, so we...
How many can make it sad to 11 for this site?
We're doing nine and 10? We're doing 11?
We're doing Memorial Drive at 10.
Okay, 10.
And we're doing this one at 11.
Okay, I should be able to do that.
Jamie? Dawn? Yes. So I got, so planning is for 11. Dawn, you all set?
You okay?
Yes. I'll just make it okay.
My turn. I don't discern a plot plan for that property. I, I see, I see where you've, you've, you've penned in a yellow outline for the property we're talking about, which is right here.
Yeah.
That's the property next to it.
Right, up until this morning, when I came over to discuss it further and that, I did not have the outline of the lot over here. But now I do, I can give you the location. The lot is about 122 feet here and also on the road. Because of this configuration of the shoreline, this line is a little bit longer than that line over there. But basically, the, the structure is pretty much situated in the middle of the lot.
Now, as far as our expectations, we need a plot plan showing the layout, we need a plot plan like this. Showing this new property or this new project with the building on it, with what you've got here on that plot plan, which is, this is existing, right? This is the new, how that's laid out on that plot plan.
Okay.
The calculations you've got for the 30% increase, obviously, that's without overhangs, right? If I got that right, without overhangs?
Footage, yes.
And then the other one, Greg mentioned, impervious area needs to be on there in terms of the 20% impervious, needs to be on that plot plan, the calculations for it. We need to have elevation drawings, plan drawings. You kind of got the plan here, not really. You got the plan of it, but we need the, the four elevations, we need the heights. The discussion we just had about... We, we, we... You need to speak into the mic, I can't hear you.
I said the purpose of being here is, well, I understand all that, what has to be provided. I want to come here preliminarily before I spend a good amount of money. If you were, the planning board are okay with me starting the process that way, but you're going to get a whole set of drawings. I mean, it's...
What are you asking us to do then?
Like I said, just conceptually, conceptually, I hate to use the word approval because we're not asking for an approval. We're looking at a, conceptually, do you think that I could go with my next step? And be able to move the house where we said and then go along and have it designed?
When you say move it, you build a new house?
Build a new house, yeah. I'm sure you picture.
That's what we're talking about, isn't it? Building a lot?
Well, I, when I say move, but basically, it's going to be this.
Okay.
Except not that crazy dormer, but...
I'm saying it. I guess what I'm trying to lay out is what our expectations are for us to get the application complete. The next step after that is approval of the application to do what you want to do. And so right now, what I'm outlining is what you need to have for your application to be complete. You're not there yet.
So you're telling me that I have to go and expend the money to get an architectural plan to show you where, what it's going to look like when we don't know?
Or approval, but that's part of the application process. See, you got to understand, we've been burnt by folks saying, trust me, and I want to do this and I want to do this, without any kind of detail showing what it is you want to do.
Well, I thought the safety valve would be once it got conceptually approved and we did the drawings and...
There is no conceptual approval. Anybody know of a conceptual approval? I, there is no conceptual approval.
What I mean is that once it was, you said, this is a process that you can do, we then go and get the drawings done and submit them to the code enforcement officer.
Let me understand, you're asking us if we're approving you moving the, you're saying yes, you're saying no?
Existing footprint and just redo it.
Look, go ahead. But it has to be substantially improved and it can't be, now, we talked to the state about this, what does substantial, substantial improvement? If you're replacing the foundation, the floor, the walls, the roof and the, and the windows, that is a complete replacement and we can say, no, you can't do that. So we can, we do have that authority and it is a complete judgment call. So just so you know, what is a substantial improvement is not defined anywhere. We got that very clear from the state when they gave us the training on how to do this. So what we're trying to say is you have a non-conforming structure right now. We want to make it as least non-conforming as possible. Which obviously, moving it away from the lake is a great step. You know, we're going to do a site visit to say, okay, what are our options? And you, oh, well, I... And you, oh, well, I wanna keep the view, so I want the camp up here, and we're like, but it's nice and flat, and there's no reason you can't put it a hundred feet back. We'd say move it a hundred feet back, that's our judgment. So that's what we're kind of at. But some of the questions, we can't go, we can't change the heights. Those are in our ordinances, we have to follow those, period. So if you wanted to go and you wanted to request a variance, you gotta go to the Board of Appeals, request a variance to get a height. That's not for us. Right, but that's, that, that's, that's something that if you came to us and you were a foot above what you could build, we'd say no. We don't have a choice. Um, and we've had applicants come in multiple times trying to work those numbers and those kind of angles, and we're like, sorry, you have to go rework it. So it has to, it has to follow the ordinance, right? So it has to follow the ordinance. When it comes to making it as minimally non-conforming as possible, there is a little bit of a judgment there. So, you know, in theory, what you're saying, and in theory, we would, we would technically say, yeah, you're improving that structure away from the lake, you're making it as, as minimally non-conforming as possible. We would, that was generally what we're trying to do. As long as you're staying within the ordinances, we've done that many times. But what Rick is trying to say is, we can't say, oh, we will approve what you put in front of us, because we don't have what you need for us to approve it. That's all.
Yes.
In theory, what you said is you're gonna rotate it, move it away from the water, put it on a foundation, meet all our ordinances, meet our impervious cover, and in theory, we would say that would likely be something we would.
That is, that is correct.
And, and we have done that in the past, and I don't wanna speak for the board, but we have, we have approved those in the past, and I know, that's what I am looking for as a board member. Right, exactly.
Other, other towns follow the exact same procedure.
Yeah.
You know, can you move it back a little further or, or not?
That's it.
To the side?
We're trying to follow the state guidelines, and there's, there is some judgment in there, I just wanna be clear about that. So until we have all the pieces, sometimes that judgment is hard to.
That's correct.
Draw a black and white line, because it's gonna be a yes or no vote. And I can't speak for the whole board, I can only speak for me as a board member. So.
So say that the site visit will help.
It will.
Seeing it in person with this.
It will, and.
Will probably.
You, you have to be cognizant also that because we don't have a building permit right now to construct a new structure, we'd have to, we have to conform to the upgraded MUBEC requirements that, uh, is now the twenty-twenty-one code. We were operating under the twenty-fifteen code for a long time. But as of April seventh of this year, the state adopted the twenty-twenty-one code. So it has some different requirements for insulation and other op- items like that. And obviously, the structure would be, would adhere to those standards. So it's not, it's not just, oh, okay, let's go build a two-by-four shed up there.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, so let's leave it this way, you, you've gotten a bunch of feedback from us. You obviously understand, we can't make a decision tonight relative to, it's okay, we can't do that. Um, with that said, let me finish, please. With that said, we're gonna visit Saturday.
Okay.
At eleven o'clock, do a walkthrough, see what you got to show us. And then from there, we can talk about what those pieces are you need to put together for us, so we can get to a hundred percent complete, and we can approve the, the project. So you need to work with us on what those pieces are and.
That's.
And provide those.
That's why we're here.
That's exactly right.
Discuss it and see where we have to go.
That's right. And all we're trying to do is expedite that process, so you aren't wasting six meetings for us to get to that point. We're trying to share with you what we typically expect.
That's correct, yep.
And if you wanna get approved, that's the efficient way to do it. And all we're trying to do is share with you our experience and what our expectations are to get to that point. Uh, we have another meeting in Nov- in December. Uh, if you get your ducks in a row, we could seriously consider your application.
But.
We need, we need to know what you're building on it, what it looks like. Okay, you're showing me pictures, but I wanna see drawings. It becomes part of the file or the application. I wanna see, I, I say I want, we wanna see a plot plan that shows the layout. That's basic. Where's the building relative to the water? Where's the septic system relative to the building? Um, what are the dimensions associated with it? Is there a well involved? Okay, so where's the well going relative to the septic system? Uh, I've heard vague comment about the su- the septic system. I don't know what you got there, I don't know what you wanna do with it, I don't even know if it complies. Um, what are you doing about that? Um, I, and I try, I, I understand what you're saying. Okay, I understand that, so we're looking at the, the drainage field. What do you got there? What do you have for a drainage field right now?
For this one?
Yeah, for this one.
It's an existing field.
It's a what?
It's an existing field.
What is it? What's the design?
Is it a two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
One-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Do you have, do you have that, you know, do you have the, the, the form that was filed when they put it in?
Okay.
And do you have a copy of that, you know?
Is it, is it a valid septic system?
Right.
Okay. All right.
You know, do you have to pump, how big is the tank, all of those kinda questions?
See, for all we know, it could be a cesspool. We don't know. Okay, you say, trust me, but what is it? Okay, so what is that septic?
That's okay, we'll look up that information, that was not brought to our attention.
I mean, that's not rocket science to figure that out. And, and with that said, the help to you folks is, maybe you need to replace it, now's the time to do it. I don't know. Um, so that's all part of the process. I got that. I got that ro- loud and clear, and I don't blame you.
But that's also in our discussion, is if the septic is substanti- substantially impacted, let's say, it's a two-bedroom, no ways are gonna meet your needs, no ways are gonna meet the design you want. Well, then the location of the septic may be not a big deal. Because, so maybe we could move the property back, you know, the build, the structure back to be in a hundred-foot compliance, compliance. So that's something that we would wanna know and look at. And, and it, I, I'm not saying that it is, there's slope and there's a lot of other factors, but just, that's what we wanna go do with the site visit for, say, what are the physical limiting factors? The location of the septic is one of them, the physical slope, rock, things like that are also, you know, features that have to be taken into account. So that's all. And Rick's just saying, we wanna see the package, you know, usually, we'll see, when we see a plot plan, also, what trees are there, what trees, you know, large trees that have to be removed, because you have to get equipment in there, you have to dig a big hole, that kinda thing. You know, the replanting, that's gonna be done by Mark, but the actual removal of trees, as the planning board, we wanna see what you have to do. So, so that we can kinda know what's gonna happen in, at the site.
I, I think the majority of the questions in that will also be answered with the site visit. When, once you see.
It could be, it could be, yeah.
And the other piece on the application is how much soil you're moving in and out. How much soil are you gonna move in and out? That's part of the application process.
How much what?
Soil. Oh. Extravation, backfill. How much is that? Uh, that, that's another element, is what I'm saying. So we'd be glad to see you loving at your site. Would they go walk through with you?
I'll be there.
Yep, you're gonna be there, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna interject, because you've mentioned architect a number of times, the board does not require an architect for their approval. They, they need renderings, they need floor plans, but it doesn't have to be stamped by an architect.
I mean, some of the things we'll look for is the drainage. You know, specifically, what's the shape of the roof? Is it going towards the water? Is it going parallel to the water? What are you putting in? Are you putting drain lines? What are you gonna do for under foundation drains? Where are they gonna go? Where's your dry well? Those things are really just impacting the water quality of the lake. That's, 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 well, I'm just saying, that's, that's the type of thing that, that is nice to know based on the structure you're building. So. Right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but tha- that's where Don said, we don't need an architectural drawing, but we need something to show those things. So those are things, those are questions that we have, and if you have a drawing that shows that, that's really helpful to us. And it can be hand-drawn, it just has to be neat and organized. You know, your drawing is, you've got some of the pieces there, but there's some pieces missing.
Okay.
So I, it doesn't have to be super fancy and done by an architect. It just has to make sense so that we know what it is you're building and where it is.
Yeah, but I'd rather have him start knowing, and that's fine.
That's, that, you know, we're trying to do it without forcing anybody to incur costs, but we have to be able to have the information to make the decisions. But that's the balance we're looking for. To actually, well, for us to review and to potentially approve, we, we have to have that information before we do approvals, yeah. Right. Yes. Yep.
Okay.
And then once you approve it, it doesn't go to, in other words.
Then we could pull it, hold on a minute.
Well, Mark still has his piece of it. Yeah, I mean, he has to have a certified third-party inspector do the building, he has to do the plumbing inspection, he has to do all those other things, and if you're moving trees, and he, you know, he needs to do the buil- the building part. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, it comes to us first.
Any other questions? So we'll see you Saturday then. Any other questions?
Oh, I should not.
Okay, so we'll see you Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you, eleven o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, what's next?
Taking that up. Um, next, if, if you wanna real quick talk about, there's, um, other materials in here. It looks like this, it says forty-three nineteen on it. Um, it's a yellow.
Okay, so that's Memorial Drive.
So there's the.
I got it?
The applicant is not here. I did speak with him about, uh, Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Um, but ten o'clock for him on Saturday morning, um, works, and he said he, that would be great, he'd like to meet you there.
He's gonna be there at ten o'clock?
Yes, if you, if there's a quorum, if you have enough people to.
To help people out, whether that is, um.
It's across.
You got the number right there.
Is there a street address? I was looking for that.
I'm sorry, it's across the street. I have that.
Way up here. Well, she wrote it out, she told, she gave us the address.
Did?
Yeah, I read it earlier. Right on here.
Three nineteen? Forty-three nineteen? Oh, that's map.
Where'd you find it? Um, the, uh.
I just was wondering, like, Memorial Drive, like, what number was it near?
Apologize, because I had the number across the street.
On the side.
Yeah, you, you wrote it down, it's, it's on, somewhere's on one of these pieces of paper. I just read it tonight.
Blah, blah, blah.
Looking. The address across the street.
Across the street?
There's no address there. Map and lot. She wrote it down.
Yeah, well, it kinda got cut off up there, so you can't even, is there any other road on the text map?
Anyways, if you go down Memorial Drive, um, anybody know where the trolley house is? The yellow, the old yellow building?
Yeah.
Huh? No, okay. Um, there's a ranch-style home with solar panels on the roof. Uh, if you go past, uh, you go past, uh, Steve Schuman's place, anybody know where that is? Okay, you keep on going by Steve Schuman's, headed toward Reed Field. Um, you'll go by his old place, and then there's a ranch right on the left, and there's a big building, three, four-car garage up on the, up on the bank. And keep on going, and you'll see a slate-blue cabin right on the lake, right after that ranch. And it's the very next place after that, across the street. And what you'll see is a whole bunch of big cement blocks that, that this gentleman put in for the town a few years back for the road improvement. The ditching and all that, those huge blocks. Um, so it's, it's right in that area, right there. And what is the number? Three, three nineteen?
I'll, I will get it and email it to you all, I think they wrote it on something, but.
That's a lot across the road from the ca- uh, it's actually the cabin, right? No, it's the next house down.
Is there anything on that lot?
It's a vacant lot.
Oh, it's a vacant.
Vacant lot.
That's why there's no.
It's got, in fact, there's blocks in front of it, right? Big blocks?
Just like my vacant lot.
Exactly, just like your vacant lot.
I wanna.
He does, so I can.
And use it.
Replicate? Duplicate?
He's making a parking.
We don't know.
It's steep there, is it?
Oh, thank.
Found it? Yeah, this is the one across the street that, the three-eighty-four is. Right.
Thank you very much, Aaron.
Three, across from three-eighty-four. Um, and basically, the information we have is that he's looking to make a parking lot up there, right?
Looking to put in a driveway, um, do some earth moving, grading, use it for, my understanding is parking an RV, at least in the short term. And there would be a retaining wall, a block retaining wall uphill from the parking area.
Oh, there's no retaining wall there right now? On the roadside?
I think on the roadside, there's.
You gotta take that out, make the driveway and move back, move into the bank. Yeah.
One of the big things about this, when I was working with this person, was the amount of information, um, to have him submit, because he's worked with the town, he's worked in the shoreline, but he's not, doesn't appear to have submitted a lot of formal information. So this was one of those ones where people know his work, he's local. It, there wasn't really a clear line as to how to document it. He's not a surveyor, he's not an engineer. So I think being in the field and giving him more direction would be helpful. That makes sense?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but say we approve this, and they create a parking lot. The next step's to build a building on it. That doesn't come back to us, right?
If it's a hundred, more than a hundred feet back, it doesn't.
Correct.
Remember we changed.
So they, they didn't really wanna provide grading information, the information.
Did we change?
They asked for, but everyone knows his work.
Right now, as far as I know, we're only responsible for a hundred feet.
A hundred feet, I don't know his work.
Don't either, but there was some, there was some level of.
You're saying the same thing.
He can build a parking.
No, no.
Part of this is, is within.
You look on the back Mac, back of that yellow page.
Well, the big thing.
Nineteen is the property.
The big thing for this, Don, is there's no listed, I mean, the big thing is the impervious cover or what you'd call non-vegetated. This lot is, you know, twelve thousand five hundred square feet, so you're looking at twenty-five hundred square feet max. That's max. That's not a big.
Fifty by fifty.
That's not big. Twenty percent maximum, non-vegetated, so. And this is, that's gonna be their limitation here. They wanna build a driveway. Yeah, if they wanna build a driveway up into the lot, then they're gonna be really limited.
As to what the area, the one that level.
Right, right. Looks like somebody owned that big lot and. Does. Sold a piece of it. It could be. Don't know.
Same party across on the water, Jamie?
They don't own the one behind, they own the one across the street, the water side.
They own the one across the street, yeah.
So to his point, though, if it's within the one hundred feet, they'd have to.
Within a hundred feet?
Yeah.
Beyond a hundred feet, no.
Can't build something. Yeah, which they could.
Now, if you look, if you look at it, you got, um.
At least on the tax map.
It's fifty-five feet, the road's roughly fifty feet.
Yep.
So.
Part of the lot's gonna be.
Part of the lot's gonna be a hundred feet.
Yeah. Well, but you look at the other side.
That doesn't come back to us.
Only forty-one feet to the water.
If you, that's the plan.
Watered.
Pardon? Actually, that's a plan to.
And if it's a, if it's a twenty-foot setback, but that's off the right-of-way, not the road, but if it's twenty foot that back, they've, the impervious cover is gonna be the cap for them, or non-vegetated.
Okay, so we're gonna, any questions on that one? So we'll, we'll meet there at ten?
We have the deed for that little lot?
Not yet.
I'd like to see that.
Could go on the registry and get it, or we can ask them for it.
It looks like most of these lots over here originally went with the ones across the road. Like, I've got a lot across from me that's like three-quarters acre. Looks like this one, they've got a little piece out. Bought it. Bought it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Like, is it, was it a non-conforming lot created?
You're looking for when it happened, Dawn? Are you looking for when that happened, or?
Yeah, who owns each one of these?
I don't know. It's a good, it's a great question, and I can.
This little yellow lot here own the whole thing, I'll bet you somebody else sold.
And when I looked up, Dawn, on the tax maps, seven and nineteen are the same people.
Yeah, it would make sense.
And not twenty-one, twenty-eight.
The lines in.
No, different party.
That's what I'm saying, they probably sold a piece of it. They left seventeen foot over here, you'll notice.
Yeah.
Well, right away, like.
It is, there's a house there.
Get to their lot.
On the picture, you can see a house there. Yeah, it's just on the top of your, top of the photo, you can see the house that they obviously drive in up and around. It's like a whole lot more than seventeen feet from the photo, though. It does. That house is on his land.
That's probably the.
Well, sometimes the tax lines are a little off.
Just once they put the parking area in the road, they're gonna want to, they'll want to build a garage on it.
I look, if you look at First Satellite, that ranch with the solar panels on it's right there.
Yep.
At the forty-three, five. We're just down the road from there.
Gotcha, yeah. What's the width of the right-of-way?
It's fifty feet. That's what they always said Memorial Drive was, give or take where it is.
On the tax map, but that's, that's one of the questions, is, you know, Mark said he usually has to do it from the edge of the road, because he's like, how else can I do it?
You know where the right-of-way is. It said, my pins are on the side of the road, and I know where my pin is, my.
Oh, it's.
Measure that and tell you where it is.
Setback's got to be twenty feet in a way, so.
Well, it's got to be twenty feet off the road, but if you measure it from the edge of the road, the road's only twenty-five feet wide, and it's on the left side of the, of the right-of-way, they could be entirely, they could be entirely fine, or the asphalt up against the front, then they got to be twenty-five, and they'll have to be twenty-five feet in anyways, because it's only twenty-five feet measured on the tax map to the edge of the right-of-way on that property. So in the middle of that lot, they're going to have to be in twenty-five feet anyways, so.
I'm just curious, I was trying to explain to those folks previously the pieces, and they didn't want to listen. And then you started detailing it, they stopped to listen. Um.
Yeah, I, they just want to know what they got to tell the architect, we just told them.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, I was going to.
Didn't write anything.
Use the examples that we have.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we need in the package. We, that's why we put examples out, so that you say, use these, that's what we're looking for. But.
What to tell the architect to do? They were asking, is it a waste of time to talk to him?
Is it feasible, is what they were asking?
Is it feasible?
Are we gonna, are they gonna spend ten grand with an architect, and we're gonna say?
No.
But how could we answer them, other than telling them what we expect to start the process? I, I.
There are no red flags, I thought that was a good start. Right, like, if you.
By the way, the reason.
Like, oh, this is never going to happen, then you'd know not to move forward, but I, I feel like they, they got a lot of information, I thought the.
Right, and I, I wanted to be clear, he's, he wanted to replace in kind, and I'm like, you can't. Not what you're saying, this property is to the point where you're going to have to do, you're, you're replacing every board, every piece, every structure. There's no way that would not be classified as significant.
And I already had that.
Property all over again. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've done this ten, twenty times. So I, I guess the other point I'd make is, in both cases, the reason why we're discussing it tonight, because, um, help me out, Dawn, but basically, they weren't listening to you as to what the expectations were.
Oh.
And that's why they were here tonight.
Oh.
And so we had to bring it to a head, if, if and leave we did that. So I wanted you all to understand why I made the decision to have her bring it forward.
Good, good background information.
Okay.
Was missing something there.
We, we went.
Jamie and I are looking.
List and.
Is that fair, Dawn, is that, that's the situation, right?
Now, now you.
Yeah.
But if they, if basically, if they include everything we told them on a drawing.
We're good.
Eat the code.
Yep.
Should be approved.
Yep, but.
So anyway, I wanted to share with the, the board.
Thank you.
That's why they were here tonight, because she wasn't getting anywhere.
I would say this, if I'm going to.
Vocation.
Million dollars on a house, you're darn right I'd have an architect.
All right, next.
Yeah.
The other property, the other application.
We did.
Thank you for mentioning.
Twelve Haywood.
Oh, what's that one?
We've got that scheduled for ten o'clock on Saturday morning, thank you.
Yeah, the, um, Memorial Drive's ten, uh, Blackberry is eleven. Okay, we ready to look at, uh, twelve Haywood, is that the next one?
The next one is, I'm sorry.
Twelve Haywood.
Okay, so that list was the list of things that I had put, were, was handing out to you tonight. Um, the agenda, this was just a list of things, because when you came in, there was a lot of paper on there, so I just kind of put a summary, um, eighty-seven Blackberry Lane, the Memorial Drive, those were the first two on there, and you just went through those. Um, these were things that carried forward from the last meeting. I have amended, proposed amendments to ordinance number eight, which creates the planning board by the town council, planning board bylaws to be in keeping with that. Um, and then the, number seven on this primary list is a handout for you to take home, and that is an application that's going to be, um, or submitted for December tenth, and it's going to, it's an existing building, they wanted to sell antiques out of it, so retail establishment. Twelve Hayward's Way.
Number seven.
It's the big package, it's the big binder one.
This is the.
Twelve Hayward Lane. That's twelve Hayward.
The antique, that's Hayward and the antique.
Oh, she's reading from this one, which is the.
I should have numbered them.
That's where you're at, right, the handout?
Yep, so this is an agenda, it's just a summary of what all that pile of paper is.
Home and look at.
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of handout the last thing.
Right. So if these two applications move forward, the additional ones that are, that are coming forward or, and they have submitted to is twelve Hayward's and then Route two oh two Antique Store. Twelve Hayward's, they, if you remember, you did a site visit and came to the board and discussed it and said you're going to have to move it back further, so that's, they've submitted a new package.
About this one.
So that's for you to take them for the next meeting, that's just what I was handing out.
He's on that page, or just the first one.
Yeah.
Now it makes.
She's on number seven, right?
Makes more sense.
Yep, that's just the paper that you have in front of you.
Well, number seven, the twenty-six hundred, is that materials you're giving? Dawn?
Sorry?
Oh, it's on.
Are you still on seven? You got it?
Look, I'm looking for my sheet, I apologize, put it down.
Okay. Yeah, because they have, uh.
Not too much left, lost to her, Dawn.
Oh, yeah, number seven, number eight is Hayward's Way, yeah, so all of this stuff is, that was what was handed out.
We have one meeting, please. Dawn, you have the floor.
Okay, sorry, this is not the agenda, this was just a summary of all the paper that was going out to you this evening, what it was for. So then, um, on the actual agenda, are the ordinance amendments are next. And I have a sheet that summarizes that, that's this sheet here. Starts at the top, it says ordinance amendments, and I'm going to just run down those with you.
Okay.
And I'm going to hand out, this ordinance is, um, has the ordinance that we've discussed, the amendments, but it also has some other stuff, because I started looking at the state statutes that we're going to have to apply, um, and some other comments. So these are just like for you to mark up and to look at in terms of what we're proposing. This is not anything official. This is not, um, a document that's going to the town council. That's for our in-house work. So the first three, or the first four on this, um, sheet, you reviewed, they were noticed for the appropriate public hearing, there wasn't any public input, you discussed them, and you decided that you're going to forward them to the town council as, as written. And then at the last meeting, you discussed accessory dwelling units and the resource protection, but I was still waiting to have a final conversation with, um, MDP with Colin, and I did. And so in the Resource Protection District, two dwelling units are not allowed. If you have a lot, you can have one dwelling unit, you can't have a two-family, you can't have accessory dwelling unit, and they do not differentiate. You can have one. Um, in the Shoreland District, you could have two, but you have to have double the frontage, double the lot area, so you could have two, an accessory dwelling unit, a house attached or detached, but it, you have to have essentially a double lot. So the, the answer was no in the RPD. So in the table, that's reflected, changed to reflect that, no, you can't have it. And I was unclear at the, when we were last meeting. That's on page seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen of the document I just passed out, the ordinance.
This is on the new one you just handed out, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And please keep in mind, like, you'll see I have some other things written in here, but we're just looking at the, the table three, table one, two, and three. So in table one, accessory dwelling units are not permitted in the Resource Protection District, and that's what I was unclear on at the last meeting. Because seventeen. So the state statute does say that you have to allow resident, uh, accessory dwellings wherever you allow residential units. But you have to meet shoreline zoning, so shoreline zoning specifically says no in the Resource Protection District, but, um, Steve McDermott was in earlier, and, and I was talking to him about it, he said, well, he was questioned, he had, he questioned it. I feel confident that this isn't the interpretation, but I'm still going to check, um, to make sure I'm not misunderstanding what he said. But we have to follow shoreline zoning, and shoreline zoning says no second unit in the Resource Protection District, so I feel comfortable that this is what we want to go forward to the town council with.
So we go forward with that for now?
That's my recommendation.
Don't sit and wait.
Yeah. Mm-mm, I shouldn't have brought that up.
They are allowed in shoreline.
They are, if you have a double lot.
Oh, you got to have a double lot.
You have to have double the land area, double the frontage, yep.
We have to put something.
Yeah, where does this?
Wait, what?
How do you know that?
You just said, yeah, that's my question. How do you know that?
Conferencing it.
Well, that's for stream.
Yeah, that's stream.
We were going to put an asterisk.
Oh, I think it's under the definitions, let's see, maybe I need both, under dwelling unit.
Wanted in this table. Got, got some there already, but.
Yeah, so under dwelling unit accessory. It excludes.
Number ten, so they just basically would need the superscript ten. Because you've already added it to the bottom of that table. Accessory dwelling units must meet the minimum land area required for dwelling units in the Resource Protection Shoreland. If you take out the S, our resource.
Our, take out the RP, yes, thank you.
The RP, just add the superscript ten to both of those, or through, all three of those, really, urge, all those yeses. No, not for, not for public water.
It's yes.
Just the yes, yes on S and SP.
Well, it says yes in public water as well, on the table.
Right, but public water doesn't apply to shoreline zoning standards. Right?
No.
It would still need the minimum land area requirement.
Oh, you're right, it would still, but, okay, then we need to add it to the statement number ten as well.
I believe so.
Plus review.
Okay, strike RP.
Dwelling units.
Yep.
As we go across, Resource Protection.
Oh, okay, I see.
And if you flip the page, there's a superscript number ten added to the bottom of the superscripts, but it only mentions S and SP, but it should have S, SP, and PW.
And I am sorry, because I, I don't recall now, what, do you, do you think the best place to put that superscript is after the line G, accessory dwelling units? Hey, Andy? Um, or do you think it's to put it after each individual column?
What, what I think we're trying to do, Dawn, is get from this point to that interpretation you stated.
And I think you have to put it on the, on the columns to the right, because you did on everything else. So you can't put it on the left, you have to put it under the districts itself, which gets confusing, because now you have a ten.
Yeah.
And, well, and especially because you're going to have a two and a ten, or SP.
So I didn't use that ten anywhere.
No, but you need to.
You could do two slash ten. Not a point.
Well, you also could go to letters, you could change the numbers to letters and do superscripts, and you could do a one, like a one A, or you could make it a nine A, or something like that, if you wanted to, just to make it very clear that it's, because when you get a whole list string of numbers, you have to put the commas in, and it gets really weird, and I don't know if you'll fit. Yeah, well, I don't know if you even needed ten A, you could just call it nine A. There's a nine and a nine A. And then you could just keep going from there, you do nine B, nine C, nine D, you know, if we ever had more. Gets goofy, but.
Not versed enough into how this, um, and that makes sense to me.
I've seen it done that way, that's the only reason I've, I've seen crazy, crazy numbers of superscripts, and that's why I said, going to like, you've already got nine, and you're not changing nines, you can't change nine, but you can add a nine A instead of ten.
Well, when it's recodified, we're all going to be looking at this very closely, and this is the kind of thing that, I'll be curious to see what they do, but it has to match what we're intending.
So, back to your explanation before, you were talking about shoreline. You could have two, two accessory dwellings, but you had to have two lots to do it.
You can have two dwellings.
Two dwellings.
An accessory dwelling or two primary, um, but they, you have to have a minimum land area that's required for each district and the frontage.
All right, so how do I get that out of this? Why does it tell me that?
Well, ten. Minimum land area required for dwelling, uh, then subnote, ten says that, but I didn't put the subnote in anywhere. That's what we're talking about, was where to put it.
Yeah. See, that ten doesn't explain to me what you just explained to me.
Table three does, on page nineteen, table three gives you the dimensional requirements. If you're adding another structure, you'd have to go to table three, and you'd have to have enough area to be able to put an accessory dwelling unit in the shoreline zone. You'd have to be able to meet that.
So in subnote ten, then, instead of land area, I really should be saying dimensional requirements.
Dimensional requirements, exactly, yes, you need to meet the dimensional requirements for having accessory dwelling unit in the shoreline zone.
So how do you, what are your suggestions on table one to get there?
I think you just have to put the superscript on, on, on land uses, table one, land uses, number eleven, G, the superscript on the S, the SP, and the PW, all those three yeses, would have to have the superscript if we're going to go with ten, which is what it is now, nine A, whatever we want to call it. And then from there, that, instead of saying, an accessory dwelling unit must meet the minimum dimensional requirements, and you could even say found in table three, and then you're just, boom, there it is, you've given them step-by-step directions on how to get there.
That's the link I was missing.
Yeah, it just say, yeah, it's a, meeting the dimensional requirements of, of table three. And if it's a non-conforming lot, you can't have a, a, an accessory dwelling unit, period, end of story. Because you've never been dimensional.
You got all that?
Yeah.
Does everyone?
Did, did someone say remove RP from footnote ten?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, Dawn had that, I scribbled it out.
And this goes back to our last meeting, and it, like, who has determined that a wetland is more important than a public water supply? I'm sorry. It's, it's just crazy.
It is.
So you, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit in a resource protection area, which, because you've got a wetland, but you can do it right next to public water supply.
Right.
Resource protection isn't always just wetland.
More often than not.
But there are a number of them that are. So if you look at our map.
So Dawn, do you have all that?
We have the big rocky outcropping tall. Can't build on this.
Dawn, do you have all that?
I have all that, so that's, um.
Going to bring it back to us corrected.
Yeah, I will correct that.
What's next?
Based on this discussion. If you can look at table three, so two pages over, right, page nineteen. So I added, I added a column, ignore the one to the far right, but it's non-vegetated. Please check those numbers. And then I also had notes that you were saying, get rid of the impervious, and I, well, I didn't know if I got that wrong. I had notes saying that you wanted to strike the impervious column, and then that didn't seem right.
Yeah, for those four zones, yes. Because the state shoreline zone only uses non-vegetated, it doesn't use impervious. So we don't need impervious, because it's going to be more limiting to say non-vegetated.
So don't strike the whole column, just.
No, no, just those. So they only have one or the other.
Well, going back to what we discussed here with these folks tonight, they said the driveway was crushed down.
That it's non-vegetated, according to state shoreline zoning ordinance, that counts as.
They, they don't know, because he said, well, it drains right through.
Well, unfortunately, it counts, because it's non-vegetated, and that's what the state uses now.
You might want to let them know that before they hire an architect.
And I thought he said they're, they connected to that cul-de-sac.
They did, it's not much, it's about seven.
And that's off of his lot completely, I think.
No, it looks like it loops in on the tax.
Okay.
Just a little, but I was guessing it was only like 750 square feet. And if his building is only going to be 1100, and he had almost 5,000 to play with, so I think he's got plenty of space.
I'd just hate for him to come and.
Right, right, to say, oh, it's a, it's a gravel driveway, it's like, no, sorry, doesn't matter.
Well.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Thanks to bring it up on Saturday morning, too, that would be a good time to.
Is this for the state, this 250, or is that planning board?
The resource protection is planning board, I'm sorry, the resource protection's per the state. And then as part of that discussion, water quality came up, and there was discussion around changing, and the board has proposed to change the public water district to 250 as well, because it's an important resource. And that was, Brent's question was, well, who makes the decision if drinking water's not as important?
The original question was, check the numbers. It sounds like we're okay with the numbers.
Yep.
Dawn, you have the feedback you need.
Believe so, so I'm just going to strike those, I'm going to strike the numbers in the top part, those districts in the top part of the column, but I'm going to leave both columns and play.
Everybody agrees with those numbers.
Okay.
We done? I, I didn't, I haven't heard about this, I wasn't at the last meeting. 250, have we looked at how this affects multiple properties that are within this area?
It, it wouldn't affect anybody that already has an existing structure. They're non-conforming, non-conforming. It's just anybody that wanted to build.
How many people might have wanted to build and bought land in the past year, and then you pull it up, shit, guess what, you can't do it now? Like.
It's not that they can't do it.
It's not that they can't do it, they have to have 250 feet away.
But if setbacks mess with everything else of where they can fit septic, where they could fit sewer. I don't know.
I mean, the whole point is, it's a resource protection. The whole point is, we're protecting it, well, both. We're protecting the, the, the resource, which is our public water drinking supply, by not letting people build there.
Well, we did vote on that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I know. So it was voted on and done?
We did.
That was on the minutes that we read this.
Dawn?
Tonight, from last week.
I was just thinking, if there was a way for me to query maybe properties that are in the public water, I, I was just thinking if there was a way to kind of ferret that out and see what the impact may be, but I don't have an answer, I was just speaking out loud. There may be.
Pardon me?
I can help. You have a thousand feet on that pond. You all just, me to all of that land in 250 feet. It's a taking, but. Might have planned to subdivide at some point, so now set a subdivision into two acre lots. Those lots are going to be before you.
Not necessarily, with the new state requirements on the minimum lots, our lot size is going to go way smaller. That's going to change by July of next year.
Twenty thousand square feet.
So your lots are just going to get thinner.
Dawn?
Why don't I see if I can look at the lots and see if there's, I can come up with some examples, that, lots that may be negatively impacted?
Is that a worthy exercise?
I think for people that owners of land in the town.
It would mostly, but, but I think the only place you really need to look.
No.
No, but, but that's exactly the type of thing we'd want to look at, is the large lots.
I, I was not bringing that up, because he was.
No, 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 we, we would only want to look at the large lots that could have been subdivided, because any lot that's a non-conforming lot, it's a non-conforming lot to begin with. If it hasn't been developed, it still has the ability to be developed. So, I mean, assuming, depending on what the size is.
That's what my worry was, I just, you know, if somebody brought land, bought land expecting they were going to build, they looked at our ordinance, and now because of setbacks and whatnot, impervious area, like, maybe they can't build now. Maybe that's just a handful, I didn't even think of the bigger picture of larger lots.
It's, it's really probably the larger lots where it's a factor.
It's always a risk that regulations can change, no matter where their land is, or what town it is.
When I bought my.
In the concern.
When I bought my house, my thoughts were I could make it into a cape. Or when I sold it, that would be a selling point. They come along and change it, it can't go above 20 feet.
I get that, I understand.
Well, the other thing, we, we did a whole lot.
That area is not built, public water, a lot of it is.
I guess, I asked the question, is it worthy? Because we've got a lot of work on our plate. Do we want our planner to go research that, or work on further items for changing the ordinance? That's my question.
I don't think it's going to change anything, we've already made.
I don't think so.
Well, the, the, the council still needs to approve this, correct?
Right.
So.
Well, this actually has to be posted in the paper still.
Yep, yeah.
You, you want to move forward with it, but the state statute requires, my little summary sheet. So this is six, on the summary of the status of the different changes in it. I had noted on here, you voted to move it forward to a public hearing, so I have to post it formally as a public hearing through the newspaper, because that's what the state requires. So it does still, it has not gone to public hearing at this level. You did all say, yes, we want to move forward. And I'll post that with, if there's any other changes, because there were still some things that were in flex. So that still will go to public hearing.
Just, this directly affects me to Carlton Pond Stream, public water supply goes right through my property, so the back, I'll lose, you know, that extra 150 feet on both sides of the stream.
I love, I want to protect everything that I can, but not at the expense of anything. I was just bringing it up, because I didn't think it's good it'll go to a public hearing, maybe there'll be other things that weren't thought about, maybe not.
Well, is this a state regulation, or is this?
Oh, this.
This is in response to Dan Wells saying, what more can the planning board do to help protect our water supplies? So it minimizes our costs from a taxpayer state being different.
No, that's right.
No.
This is in, this is just following the shoreline zoning that the state does have. So, and then the town is being stricter than what the state guidance has, by changing those percentages. The state's capped at, you know, anything inside of 250 feet is shoreline, so it has to come to us. So, and there are towns in Maine that do not approve any building within 250 feet, because they are stricter, and they say you cannot build in Maine shoreline zoning, period. But that's their choice. You know, our choice is that, no, we're not going to disallow that, we're going to let people go, really almost go, we're as lenient as you can be, going up to the state statute. And the reason we're changing to, changing away from impervious to non-vegetated is because of the state ordinance uses non-vegetated.
Yep.
That's not us, that's, that's the state statute, and we just didn't change our verbiage, so. It, it, it's, right. It, it's, it's, it's a, it's a more correct term anyways, because then it's not a question. But it is going to impact some of the people that come in and have those discussions with us about, oh, I want to put down stone and drainage and things like that, it's like, sorry.
Was that us two changing public water to 10% non-vegetated?
Yes.
Yes.
That's not state, 10%?
Right. But, but it doesn't matter.
Those two just were public water.
We're kind of violating.
Because of.
So public water, we're proposing to move it back to 250 feet and 10% impervious area.
Correct. I think you mentioned about Dan Wells' comments about the financial aspect of it. I think maybe having a, um, a fact sheet around this for a public hearing would be helpful, because that's, that's a big piece that is not, I mean, it's environmentally related from the perspective of, the whole point is to protect the water quality, but there's that finance aspect of it, which really also drives it.
And I thought Dan, when he came and presented to us, said he was somehow incentivized by the state or the feds or something, as they put more stringent guidelines about protecting water supplies, that there were monies or grants available to him.
Excuse me?
Further, to further.
It's nice, but I'm more worried about people.
Okay, moving right along.
Question, is there a way we could talk about, I'm sorry, the 10% too? When you're applying that beyond the 250 feet?
The 10% applies to the entire lot, so.
It'll still apply.
It applies to all of that area that they can't build in anyways. So they have to have a pretty good sized lot.
That's okay.
Anyway.
Masking.
So if it's 100 feet wide, and you've got 250, you've got 25,000 square feet, that does, that's already non-vegetated. I mean, it's already vegetated.
Going to, if somebody wanted to build on a lot, if they were, if it was buildable, outside the 250 doing, okay.
No, it's really expansion and, and, and total lot.
After the 250.
No, it's all the lot. It's the entire lot. So from the shoreline to the back of the property, that's the lot.
That would be 10%.
It's 10%, yeah. So it doesn't, so, and, and if we're saying you can't build a structure within 250 feet, that entire distance is all part of that calculation, because you already couldn't build there. Oh, yeah, because it's, yeah.
Right, so, but the 250 would count to the square foot of a lot.
Sure, absolutely, yep. 10% of the entire lot. Yeah.
Got it.
I mean, it, it's not sure how much it matters to me, in the end, I may well have a conversation.
Hard to go back when the water's contaminated.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's where we stand with, if those columns make sense to you, I will strike what we talked about, and update that, update the annotation on table one. And then going back to my sheet here, sorry, Andy. And then the winter planning board, striking the section in the ordinance article five, 15, A3, it's a section in our ordinance which references the planning board, but we already have the town council ordinance number eight. And I, and I, did I hand that to you tonight already? I did, so the two other documents to look at in relation to these changes are the, one sheet says graft on it, front and back, and that's town council ordinance number eight. And then your bylaws. And so what I've done is, I've gone in and just made some recommended changes to these, to be consistent with each other, and what the state recommends, and then the bylaws you can adopt, but then any changes to the, to the ordinance for the town council would be just recommendations, because they're going to need to look at that and decide what to do with it. Does that make sense? So like currently, our zoning ordinance, it declares the planning board can, a quorum is four people, but the council ordinance says five. So there's some inconsistencies. Do you want to just run through? We can run through these real quick, or do you want to wait till the next time?
Well, I mean, let's talk about that one, four versus five. Right now, the council's is five, ours is four.
Yeah, and we've been using four.
And we've been using four.
We want to.
Is it five for the planning board, or is it five for the council?
Five for the.
Five, the planning board.
Ordinance says that the planning board.
Okay, we really should follow the council's ordinance.
So we're, the council's ordinance says, hold on a second.
I just wanted to make sure that was the ordinance for the planning board, not the ordinance for the town council.
No.
For the planning board.
Okay.
The council's.
Their ordinance, they say that we should have five.
Right, and ours has been four, so there's a conflict, we're trying to straighten it out.
So I would say we probably should follow the town council, because that would be the easiest correction, and shouldn't be a problem.
Well.
Articulate for change.
Yeah, just, just matching theirs.
Well, my recommendation actually would be that you all recommend to them that it be four, that they change the ordinance to four.
Okay.
Because that, I mean, the majority of the board is four.
Majority, uh, the board membership is seven plus two alternates. Majority would be four. I don't know where five came from. Now, maybe it's the nine, I don't know. The seven plus two.
Yeah, it could be.
I don't know.
But you'll have seven.
Historical, which is like.
Okay.
Well, I guess the other reality is, is that we're, we're currently using four. So there's a lot of things we've done with four.
And that's the voting members.
Okay, so it behooves us to change it to four.
Well, and it was four, we changed it since I've been here, and then it was a majority of those present and voting. So that's what it was before that.
That's not a good one.
We've not been, we've not been consistent for a long time, so I would ask the council to say four.
Four, okay.
So you're covering this whole thing, and then we're going to make a motion to recommend, or?
This is one of those ones, I'd like you to take it home and look at it, but I wanted to just run through to tell you what it was in here.
Well, we just had a discussion about four versus five. What's the board's recommendation? All in favor of four?
Four. Sure.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so that one's, okay, then, the first part, I don't know, let's start at the top, then number two is appointment. And so this ordinance is the council ordinance, it says seven members and up to two associates. And the, the ordinance, the part of the ordinance that we're striking in the zoning ordinance reference planning board, it said up to seven and not more than two. But then it also said, all the residents, all the members must be legal residents. So I just called that out. I don't know if the council wants to put that in there or not, if you have a recommendation on that, but it will no longer state that, because it, that's what's being struck out of the zoning ordinance. So if we strike the ordinance, as you previously agreed, it will no longer say that, that members of the planning board have to be legal residents, so I don't know what the intent, if they're.
I don't.
Maybe we just call out the difference, and say, you know, this is, this is what we're taking out, so that they're aware that.
Make sure it's noted somewhere.
It's not required anywhere that we say.
Why, why wouldn't you want people on the planning board to be residents of the town?
Yeah.
You would want them to be town residents.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that somewhere in the application process.
I would think so.
Maybe duplicitous someplace else.
I would think so. But I guess if you were appointed, like, what if you moved? Could you stay on the board? Okay, I would think so too, but.
So I guess, I mean, I can check with Deb, the town clerk, on that, but I wanted to make sure it's called out that it does take it out. So if it's not duplicitous someplace else, it may be leaving it open, and maybe the intent is for other people to be able to be on it, I don't know, but.
Wouldn't think so.
I want to make sure someone sees that. It should be contemplated.
Yeah.
What are you saying, this one, and yellow isn't in there now?
Uh, the, all of the red, underlined there is, um, that's, the highlighted part is just really my, my, me making notes. So the, currently says, the council ordinance currently says the board shall consist of seven members and two associate members. Part that we're striking, zoning ordinance, is the remaining part that says.
Okay.
Zoning, so it says.
They were saying the opposite.
No, no. So the black text is the actual ordinance, and the red is either recommended change or just a comment. So currently, the, under E, the council ordinance says, no municipal official may serve as a member, blah, blah, blah. But the zoning ordinance that's being struck also said, or spouse, so.
So our, our recommendations be as you highlighted and underlined. And the question is, is there some ways in the overall rules that say they must be a resident?
And I guess that's.
And you think it does. Only makes sense, but, wow. So are we okay with recommending that?
Yes. Law's the wrong word, but that's standard practice for many years with towns. Our spouses.
Yeah, I mean, you're just trying to avoid nepotism rules as best you can. I mean, they didn't go so far as to say, you know, your kids, or your parents, or your cousins, or, you know, I mean, you could, you could keep going down that road if you wanted to, so.
There is a legal. There is a legal.
You would hope so. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it'd be very weird if we had the code officer or our planner, and their spouse was on the planning board.
Yeah.
That would be, that, you could definitely see a conflict coming out. Because you couldn't be on both.
Okay, so we're okay with E? As a recommendation?
Yeah, so I guess what I probably should do is separate out these comments in a memo. There's a couple of things, as, like, proposed actual strikeout underlined, but some of this is just comment, right? So I'll pull these that you say, yeah, that sounds good, I'll put it in a memo. So the spouse, you think, will call it out that, hey, this is in our current ordinance, we're gonna take it out. Do you want to make a recommendation if it should stay in an order? Do you want to just say? Make the observation. And I'll just remind real quick where this came from. So our ordinances are being codified. And Deb and Anthony in the town vault came across this ordinance. I, I had not seen it. And so Anthony presented it because he's going to the council with some, with some ordinances, like there are some that are no longer applicable and should be looking for. I guess eradicated. So he was asking me about this ordinance, what, you know? And so I looked at it to see if it was consistent, to see if there's any changes that should be made or if they should eliminate it. And I think they have to have an ordinance created in the planning board. And I was just looking at it in terms of our zoning ordinance, how to make it consistent.
Let me understand. I'm looking at ordinance eight. Is that, is that ours or is that the council's?
It's the town council's ordinance.
That's what I thought, okay. So we're making recommendations to changing the town councils, uh, number eight?
Yeah, recommendations to them.
Okay.
So they, so the charter establishes that there will be a planning board, and the planning board does what the state allows them to do. So this spells out, you know, more information about what the planning board will look like. And then you have your own bylaws, which talks about your meetings and officers and that. So there was some redundancy and there was some discrepancy.
Do we need a motion on this?
Pardon?
It says you can.
That's what our zoning ordinance currently says. So we're, we're proposing, and the board's proposing to take it out of the zoning ordinance. And then it's already, because there's overlap.
Yeah.
But call out to the town council, hey, we're gonna take this out of the zoning ordinance, but just point out that now this is no longer in writing somewhere.
We don't have a chance.
Up to the council, right?
We have it in one place. These are our recommendations in that one place. And that's under the ordinance eight, town council.
And that's. That is the bylaws. The, the town council ordinance number eight, just these two pages that they draft. Very short.
We just need to be comfortable.
I mean, it was really the, and that's why you guys. The document that you have here is the ordinance and me just calling out some things like, like the board shall elect a chair instead of chairman. And then it's, we have vice chair and recording secretary. It's just, it's just some tweaking. It's not anything different. Pointing out about the spouse that that, you know, when we strike it out of the zoning ordinance, it's not gonna be anywhere in your regulations. It's not in your bylaws. The whole quorum discrepancy. And then I highlighted duties and powers under A. It speaks specifically to the role the planning board plays in the comprehensive plan, which I don't believe that this is currently the way that it's. Yeah, so that needs to be revisited. I'm not necessarily suggesting a change. I've just highlighted it as something that appears, let that disappear. In this town, it's not uncommon for a planning board to do that. So it's, at the time, I mean, it was appropriate language, but if that's just not what the town's gonna do, it should be clear.
Anything else to cover on this document?
I just made a note in C that it says the planning board can obtain goods and services necessary to its proper function with the limits. So that's currently happening through the, through the planning staff. So if you guys were to need, you know, consultants or different things that you needed to do your job.
Services, food.
Snacks. It goes, I was just pointing out just as a comment to you all that that's, that's currently something that you would submit through planning department.
Was it in order to make a motion to move this forward to the council?
If you want to make a motion to that extent, what I would do is pull out some of these comments in a separate memo, and then give you a copy of both the ordinance with just the actual proposed changes and then a memo with the, with the notes in it for you to approve.
Oh, it, it is in order to approve this tonight?
If you're, if you're ready to do that, absolutely.
Entertaining a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes we just discussed on ordinance number eight.
For a second? Discussion. Brent?
Don, do you have what you need from us?
I do.
For those, for the changes that Greg just kind of painted over?
I tried to.
I do. My concern was that, that you, I just thought in looking at this now, that you guys may not be ready. If you, if you are, then I will write that up for you so it's more clear and present that to you. And just make sure it is in fact what you're.
A motion would be order at that point, and a motion would be in order at that point, not now.
I'll come back to you with that, and then you can make a formal motion.
Okay.
I'll submit.
Send your motion?
Present.
All right.
We need to say, uh, legal resident of Winthrop? Well, I, I can see me living over in Manchester saying, I want to be on the planning board. I'm a legal resident.
Added.
Thanks. Get some of the ice discussion.
Okay, thank you. Next?
I'll pull that out.
Okay.
I have a curiosity.
Yeah.
We're gonna codify this, which means basically we're gonna put it all on the computer.
It's gonna be all in a format. Yeah, it's gonna be much easier to.
I guess I don't quite understand. That should make it easier to look through and change and adjust.
It will.
Okay, so why are we getting all in a sweat about it now?
Because it's, they're gonna codify what we have, so they're gonna take what we have. And right now, what we have is at odds. It's not consistent.
But any, any town like you or Debbie should be able, after it's codified, should be able to go in there and make necessary changes.
No. If it's formatting, possibly, but if it's content, that's still the planning board, the council, staff doesn't have authority to change them.
If the council says, I didn't mean it that way. I meant, so if the council says do this, this, and this, and that's what we want this to look like, then you can physically, or Debbie, or Anthony, go in and change the verbiage in the document.
Yes, there's gonna be a way to do that, and it'll all stay consistent with the format. Yeah, we've already got someone who's, who's starting it for us, and then we, as we go along and there's changes, then we would work within that format. I'm not sure if I know what you mean by do it yourselves.
Well, you, suppose we make a mistake, and they never make mistakes. Suppose they do, and it, and it goes all through, and then you realize it's a mistake. You can come back here, ask to have a change, then can you go erase and type in the changes?
So there's, if you.
I don't want the town to be in a position to have to pay someone every time we gotta dot an I across the T.
The, so the, the outfit that we contracted with, they'll update it once a year. So during the year, there's gonna be changes to different ordinance, and then at the end of the year, they will, so we will change it in the short term, but when it's, when it's actually updated officially on that, in that format, they will do it. Yes, we will. Yeah, so it'd still be documented.
So, Andy, just a question for you. When she gets us prepared and we vote on it and say, this is what we're sending forward to the ordinance, to me, that'd be ideal for you to represent that to the council as our representative. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can do that for us? Okay. Thank you. Yes.
So where it says legal resident, not to go down a rabbit hole, but does that also, somewhere in the, the town council's ordinance, know anything about West visiting? Do we not care about that? I'm just curious. It could be a legal resident.
I think.
Not be a U.S. citizen.
I think when I completed my application to be an associate on the planning board, I had to certify that I was a U.S. citizen and a citizen of Winthrop.
Okay.
To go back to.
I did too. Good point.
Yeah, because you have got to get up and do the.
Okay. So I'll let you decide. It's already eight forty if you want me to walk through the bylaws. But, so when this came up, when Anthony raised this question about the ordinance number eight, I looked at that and then looked at the bylaws for consistency. And so you see, on the top, I just put the planning board is established in accordance with the town council ordinance number eight, Winthrop Planning Board. And then, looking at this, I hadn't looked in a little while, I'm wondering if we should add a table of contents? If you think that would be a good idea, because there are quite a few. I had, I looked at it and I had it formatted in, in a couple of places you can see where I was starting to make the changes. And that was part of what, Greg, you had pointed out in the zoning ordinance. So, um, there isn't anything substantive in here? It's referencing, you know, a section of the ordinance to make it more understandable? You all had decided previously that you wanted to say site visits instead of site walk? And then I had a comment on page six. Bylaws currently say that all the members will sign any plans that need planning board signatures. Now, you do have to sign subdivision plans to be recorded, the planning board members, but I just, not to decide right now, but food for thought, I think we should start signing plans, but could it be allocated to the chair for, you know, practical and logistical reasons? After meeting, after you approve a plan, the actual plan that's approved, that's gonna be in the file. Stamp it and have the chair sign it. Because as we know now, going back through files, which is the plan that got approved? It's just another way to document.
Reasonable. I mean, we have to sign subdivision ordinance. We, I mean, subdivisions, we have to sign those. Those are gonna be registered. I think that's the only thing we ever have to legally sign.
Is.
We all have to sign whoever voted on it, whoever's there.
That is my question, is when you say we all have to, but it's only the people that were present and voted on it at that. Got it. Yeah.
Has to be a majority, you know?
Sure.
So, and, and that discussion, I think Betty was here and like, no, you have to sign it, Betty, even if you didn't approve it. So.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you're saying that we approve it at one meeting, and the next meeting we sign it. Everybody's here signs it, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or is it everybody that voted on it?
It's everybody that voted on it, everybody that.
Okay, that's the, okay, that's a different question. Yeah, that makes sense.
We chiseled one down, and it didn't matter if you voted yes or no, if you voted on it, if you abstained because of.
Oh.
Fine, but if you voted on it, you have to sign it. Whether, even if you voted against it.
Bother me.
Major, under protest, I'll sign.
Majority rules, right?
Voted no or whatever, but you have to, has to be registered.
That up, it's rarely enforced, but on, and unless things have been changed that I don't know about. On the town council, you wish to abstain, okay? Explain yourself and ask permission.
Yes.
From the rest of the council. And there's many reasons for that. Mostly it's so people can't bail out of a tough decision or make a.
Yep.
I didn't want to make a decision that involved.
No, we did that. I mean, Rick had to excuse himself for property that he helped a neighbor, like, do. And we did, we did. Yep.
Yeah, okay, I just, even if that was in here.
Yep.
We think, I think everything else is clarification, and it looks like actually even some of the form, like just bullets that didn't get changed. So I'm going to take the council ordinance, like I had said, I'll make a separate memo of the observations and recommendations, and then the small textual changes will be the strikeout underline. And with this bylaws, what do you guys think of adding a table of contents? Do you think that it's?
I, I think it's, I think it's enough pages and information. Maybe it would be a good thing. If somebody were looking for something specifically. I mean, it's ten pages.
Do you know how to do that in Microsoft Word? It's really easy to do.
Yeah, it is.
Right?
Or if it's really hard. I don't know how, I just don't know how to do that.
Because if you didn't write it on the template, and if you didn't write it, you gotta go in and highlight, add the hyperlink, and it's a pain in the butt.
No, I want to do it the, I want to start, start from scratch and do the way.
Yeah, find the template. You can download it. Find the template. They build a table of contents document. You can even Google that. Find the Microsoft template, and then you can cut and paste the different pieces in. And then, but then you have to change the formats so that it knows in the table of contents, anything that's labeled a one, it's gonna label, and then you could tell it, oh, okay, I want you to label the one and the A, B, C, D, and then that's it, or whatever. But then, no matter where you move them in the document, they stay in the table of contents. You just run the little button there and it reruns it. It updates it with the right page numbers. Yeah.
You see, you had said that before, and I thought.
Really easy, and all, all you have to do is use the tape, use the template, and you're good to go.
Use, use your admin assistant.
Yes, you, but you've got to, you've got to start with that, because now, if you've got a document that's just Microsoft Word or text, now you have to go in and every single bullet, you need to select heading, second heading, second heading, second heading. You know, it's not that hard, but ten pages, it's gonna take a few minutes. But also, you set the formatting there, so you could actually decide, some people decide, okay, when I get to bullet point I, I'm gonna have it in smaller font, or I'm gonna change something about it. Or even, you've already got some of the formatting in there, because obviously the I's have different spaces between the I and the starting of the text.
Yeah.
And you could set those formats. So sometimes, but just know that you want to set the hyperlink so that you can match that.
I think Brent just said the magic thing is, I forgot, now I have access to an assist. So I'll ask Jen, and hopefully that.
Yeah. Well, just make sure, also, just say, give me a template.
Don't bother with the table of contents.
No, you could, you could, this wouldn't be a hard one, because you're looking at one, and you could just make it not hyperlink this time, and just say, that's fine. But the nice thing is if it's a Microsoft Word document and it's high, and it's hyperlink, you actually could open the electronic document. You click on number three, and it takes you to number three.
Yes.
It takes you specifically to that section in the document, which ten pages isn't bad. Two hundred pages, it's really nice.
Back to the planning board bylaws. Are we all set with that one?
Having a feedback. I will re-present it in a cleaner way with the, you know, incorporation.
Bring it back to us?
Yeah.
Okay. Next?
Just a suggestion to throw out there, okay? Something that's been winding around here for a long time, which may or may not be a good thing. But if, if a person is familiar with the ordinance, like we all are here, it's, it's fairly easy to go through the ordinance, find out what our rights are. Okay? And, but that's not so easy for someone that's not used to dealing with the ordinance. Okay? So, I mean, basically, it starts out with a question to the code enforcement officer, then the written decision of the code enforcement officer, okay? Okay, and then he may send you here, in which case you can, or he may send you to DBA. I think you put something in there, which.
DBA.
And so that should be in there, right? So you start out with code enforcement officer, written decision, planning board or DBA, whichever you just put in, okay? And then the appeals process to the code enforcement officer's written decision, okay? Or to your decision. That just should, one simple page for citizens, this is the place.
We did, we did build some examples so that, to make it so that to say, like, if you're gonna have to come to the planning board, this is what you would need. We also, just for planning board, just for planning board, and then we also built, because we felt like the commercial property, if someone came to Winthrop and said, I want to build a spaceship factory to Dawn, she goes, how do I do that? So we built a one-page cheat sheet on exactly walking through the ordinance. It, it references the ordinance specifically step by step, tells you where to go, what kind of business you are, how many people you have, it's gonna depend. And then it's gonna depend on where, what zone you can build it in, what zone you can't build it in. So it walks you through the ordinance.
Andy, when you talked, I was in the car that time?
Yeah.
And I, I'll send it to you.
I, I think we're talking about, maybe it's apples and oranges, but the difference between how to and what your rights are. I complained about a year ago from a citizen that said that they could not get a written decision. Okay, if you can't get a written decision, can't move forward.
A written decision on planning board action?
Um, yeah.
Be curious to know more. We can talk about a lot of this, because legally.
To appeal, you know, someone basically refused and asked for a written decision and didn't get one. So they didn't know that that was their right, okay? And I chose not to.
Who did get involved? Who did get involved?
Sat there, well, I know, it's still sitting there.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I mean, there's a couple of cases, right, at least one that I know of, that right now is in lack of a better places, in their hands, and we haven't heard from them. So if they're claiming that, I, I don't know why. if they're claiming that, I, I don't know why.
Well, you need a, it, it's not good enough, and I did remember, I did thirty years on the ZBA. Okay, it's not good enough to appeal to the ZBA and say so-and-so said this and that, okay? You need to go to the ZBA, file an appeal that code said this, okay, it's written. Says it's clear right here.
Findings that he's talking about, and the board makes a decision, if someone wants to appeal your decision, they need to know how you made your decision, what is your decision? We still haven't gotten real comfortable with that format is, but...
Well, I mean, whether it's the board or the codes, you know, that needs to be, you can't just die to bail out and...
I mean, we, again, we have a case right now, uh, we've had lawyers involved, and haven't come back to us. And it's in limbo, I don't know how else to describe it, and...
We've had several cases like...
And I understand that, but there's one big one right now.
Yeah, but I think we've had several big cases, I mean, even the ropers, you know, they didn't come back. We said, you gotta meet the impervious cover, period. They came here, Barry Crowley came in four years ago, wanted to build a whole subdivision.
This goes on, right.
And we said, no prob, you know, here's what you need to do, but you gotta follow the ordinance. And that was where we kinda left it with him, and he never put forth a case for us to, you know, that could be the type of thing. If someone comes and asks our gut feeling, like we got today, we, we can give them our gut feeling, we can't give them a yes or no. There is no, nothing, we can't offer anything in writing, other than, we're gonna follow the ordinance. That's all we can really give them.
I'm not asking you any of that, all I'm saying is, you, you, like, these people that leave you in limbo, they, they have no right to...
Right.
Okay, but, you know, the, the key here is where, you know, like, you know, okay, what are my rights? I don't know anything. Bunch of mumbo jumbo to me. What are my rights, okay? My rights are, I go to code enforcement officer, I ask him what I should do. Okay? Code enforcement officer says, nothing, won't write down what you should do. You know, won't give you that form that sent you to the planning board, or the ZBA, or won't tell you that you'll have to go, which is it, the planning board first, or the ZBA first?
ZBA.
ZBA first.
They can't get off base till they get some kind of a written decision with an initial on it from code enforcement. Okay? And then, once they get here, I mean, I mean, even the ZBA, you know, tabled quite a few cases that weren't properly prepared.
Right.
Tell them, you know, here's what you need to do, come back.
They're saying that should be...
Should be right.
Right.
I send a notice of decision.
Kind of citizens' rights.
Whether it's approved or denied, it's still...
Kind of a citizens' rights kind of thing.
That's what we're working on.
We have the one case that, but I had to go to the zoning board.
Yep.
It was the two properties, one was too close to the other one.
Yep.
It's only one I remember us denying. But it wasn't really...
That's when we were doing them first, now we're not doing them.
Yeah, now they're going. Maybe that was more than a year ago, too.
Yeah.
I used the example tonight. I don't think you were here, Andy, but maybe you were. Case tonight, we... Good for you. So, we had a case tonight, we went around, around, and around, and they're looking for a decision, and we can't make a decision. We don't have enough information, but we can't even get to proving it as a hundred percent complete, the application complete.
Should we send them some...
Well, I mean...
Wasn't an official...
There was no decision, it wasn't an application, yeah.
Your advisement would be, and you don't have to write it, but you need to tell, because that's not a situation that, they can't appeal.
Yeah, I mean, I...
So, you know, that's not a legal, any legal reason to appeal, so, you know, you're actually being kind to them. You could, I would think, just, you know, some information you didn't...
I think we did...
If you don't do that, you say, you need this, this, and this, and go home and come back.
And we did that. We did both of those things you just said, and there's no official document that we rejected them.
No, but it's on tape, you know, I mean, it's...
Well, that's what you're satisfied with.
Because now I'm feeling like, something should be remedied.
No, it's nothing, it's nothing stopped. Okay, it's just, I, I felt like this for a very long time, you know, like, you know, people would come to me and say, what do next? You know, and either they have their question, they have a piece of paper, say, reasons.
Yeah, I think the challenge...
You review applications, right? So that can be a step. Code enforcement officer makes a decision, you need to go to the DBA, but then if you get back to the... But you hit the planning board, you can't do anything with the ZBA, because that's illegal. When you hit the planning board, you can be in there, and you can say, you can't do it.
Yeah, and I'm gonna send you the document that Greg was talking about, because I did said I was into it before, and I, I wrote it down.
Good.
And that might help, give you some of the things that you're thinking.
You're, you know, like, to be here.
We've, we have last half, I'm gonna say, we've spent a lot of time on, how do we interface with the applicant and help them with the process? Including logic diagrams, and, and, and explanations, and streamline the process, and forms, and that, we've done a lot of work. And, uh, so our approach has been around helping the applicant versus, um, documenting where they're at in the process. Now, we do have the formal, except...
I know that, and I think that things are getting much, much better in it. My, my, my thing is like, just a simple sheet of paper that says, go to code enforcement officer, get a written decision about what to do next. Okay? Then do that, then, once you've done that, if you've been, if you've been accepted, then this is what you do next, go to Dawn.
Bad idea.
That's a road mapping.
It, it's, it is, it is a roadmap, you just, but, but you just have to be careful on where you're trying to go, right? Okay, a resident comes to you, and they want to build a house on a vacant lot. They need to go to table three, they need to go, you know, figure out, do they have the dimensional requirements to build? Are they in the shoreline zone, are they out? If they need a variance, they need to go to the ZBA, so there's... The, the roadmap can get really, really complicated, and you have to decide the level of detail, because at some point, if you say, well, I want all, somebody says, I want all the answers, go read the whole goddamn thing, sorry, you're done. It's your only option, right? It's your only option. But if you want, if you want a cheat sheet, you're saying, okay, I'm gonna max this one page, twelve-point font, that's the most I'm gonna put on this page, and I'm gonna design this for residents, that's something that I think probably could be, I mean, Dawn could probably do that pretty easy, as a, just a quick outline, saying, here's the process, this is the form, this is the process, this is what you would need to do if you're in the shoreline zone here, see this one document. It could be, there could be extra documents.
Well, will be, might be Dawn, or might be Mark, and they'll give you that process sheet.
Right.
And then the next person that you have to deal with is Mark, because he's the one that has the authority to tell you, you can or you can't do it, and which board do you have to go to.
Right, right, and, and he needs to be, right, but he, and he also needs something that I see all the time, is you need to tell Mark what it is you're trying to do, because most people are bad at that. They go, well, I just wanna know if I can. Well, wha- what do you wanna do? Sketch out, how big a building do you want? Where do you wanna put a house? Even if it's, you know, put some numbers down and put a sketch down.
And Mark, you, you have a preliminary set of plans.
Sometimes.
You know, we had some issues with people saying the property line is here, and that's when that code of sale got added in, that we'll take your word for what the property line is, but if you're wrong, it's your tough luck if you gotta tear down your building. Okay? We're not gonna force everyone to get an expensive settlement, but you, if you make a mistake, it's on you, not on the code or anyone else.
We on a, a regular basis, and we did two tonight, right? On a regular basis, we have parties come in for a interview, and, and basically, we hear what they have done, what they wanna do, and then we go around the room, giving feedback on, this is what I think you need to have. We've done that numerous occasions in the last year or so, uh, to give them feedback on how to get in line with the process. Particularly if they're coming to the planning board, um, we do that on a regular basis. In fact, we had a question about a couple of parties, uh, recently applying or trying to apply, and, um, the agenda changed, Dawn and I talked, and we said, yeah, have them come in, and let's talk some more, and then we had that happen tonight. And again, it was all in line, we're trying to help them with what they need half the...
I think the board, this board's been great, okay? It isn't about trying to steer this board into acting differently. It's only about letting the citizen know what the steps are, really, okay? That's all it's about. You know, when they walk... Yeah.
The old days, we called that a logic diagram.
There you go.
Okay, uh, next. Uh, where are we at? We're at nine o'clock. The rules say we don't start any new business at nine o'clock.
All right, like, one other thing that's in that...
The rules say we don't start new business, go ahead.
I can make them, though.
Yeah.
This is just real...
Go ahead, real quick.
In that document, I did add a definition of non-vegetated area, that wasn't, that you haven't talked about. So, that you, you said we should have this, now it's there, so if you could just take a look at that, not right this second.
Where'd you do that?
In the definition section.
In the, oh, in the ordinance?
Page sixty-eight. So, we talked about doing it, but I hadn't actually put it in the document.
What was, what was the word?
Non-vegetated.
Non-vegetated.
That's to be in line with the state ordinance.
With the state, yeah.
So there again, we need to take action on that to move it forward.
Well, that was what you wanted to include, we have to include that when we post it for public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I do need...
They're gonna stir us when we do that.
Yes, please include that.
So is that, that in order tonight, or? Have a public hearing?
We are, we're gonna conclude that in a public hearing, you already made a motion to, to, to move forward with this, I just want you to look at the definition, make sure...
Okay, so this is all business refreshed.
Yeah, yeah, if you see something wrong, and I took definition, you know, it's from chapter one thousand, so it shouldn't...
Everybody read definition, see if you're okay with it.
Definition at one time is...
Yeah.
Compacted lines. I'm like, something you come up with. You just say it.
Yeah, they used to love that.
Finally figured out that a ground...
Or phosphorus load, the runoff, yeah. Any parking area, regardless of, you know, because it's, you're compacting the soil by parking on it, driving on it.
All right, anyway, I'm, I'm...
Quick follow-up from our last meeting, I did review the, uh, files that Dawn provided, uh, for the public water supply, and I was able to glean five or six different points, specific points, that Dan had recommended to the planning board, or to the town council back in two thousand and two, maybe. So I will put that in a memo to you and Dawn, I was gonna have it ready for tonight, and I didn't do it.
So I don't have it, then?
You don't, no, but I will get it before the next meeting, and it will...
And we'll put it on the agenda to review?
Yeah, and it will build on the additional considerations for further protections in public water supply.
Great, thank you.
Dan Wells, um, Brent knows this, I found out right after our meeting, Dan Wells is actually finishing in January, so, um, they're looking for a new supervisor.
I saw the advertisement.
We have a meeting, I almost think it's the next one, with...
It is.
Yeah, with the board of the Water District, okay, and one of the things, the state keeps putting pressure on everyone to create more affordable housing. Okay? And, uh, which often means smaller lots, which makes it difficult to put septic systems. And traditionally, the Water District has been reluctant to extend their lines. And we're gonna have a meeting, who knows how it's gonna go, but yeah, the town council, it was the next one, right?
I saw it on the Monday agenda, yeah.
And, uh, just talked to them. That's exactly my opinion.
That still may be the case.
We have an opportunity now, okay? You know, Dan's retiring, and we have an opportunity now, look at things a little bit differently.
I don't understand if it ever been clear to me whether that's an infrastructure issue, is it a budget issue? What, what makes that decision?
It's a money, the main trunk lines have enough capacity, because you said, take care of the mill.
Yeah.
Okay, but, you know, according to Dan, it's a million dollars. If you're gonna run a line to a division with fifty or sixty affordable units, you get that million dollars back eventually. Reasons are so rare, just...
Take the motion? No.
Second.
That's right, too. Dawn made the motion to adjourn when he came in the door tonight. Jamie seconds it. Discussion, all in favor? So, appreciate whoever can make it Saturday.
At our next meeting for ten?